Call the meeting to order. Roll call of aldermen.
Heisler.
Here.
Consilla.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Rudowitz.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Selfie.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Seibert.
Here.
Martinson.
Here.
Elmore. Snyder.
Here.
Musgrove.
Here.
Arling.
Here.
Alderman on Elmore is excused. Roll call of department heads.
Chief Clay. Chief Weinstein.
Here.
Mike Glenn.
Here.
Dan Non.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Katie Minchin. Here. Tim Rudowitz.
Here.
Mitch Snyder.
Here.
Liam Schermin.
Here.
Emerald Folds.
Here.
Chuck Shaver.
Here.
Bob Sable.
Bob Sable and Chief Clay are excused. Ladies and gentlemen, if you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no public hearing this evening, but I am going to use my discretion for just a minute out of respect to a presentation to our assistant fire chief soon to retire had ballgame tickets. So we're going to hold public participation for just a moment and ask Augie Werner and Chief likes to please come forward. I hope this isn't a real catching endeavor that's starting to happen, but we're having a couple retirements. Steve Clayler last meeting we recognized. And tonight we certainly want to pay our thanksfulness to August E. Werner Jr. This plaque states that is presented to August E. Werner Jr. and grateful appreciations for 26-plus years, 1986 to 2012, of dedicated service to the city of Bellevue Fire Department, and most recently while serving as assistant fire chief. Augie, we do appreciate it. It's a lot of years. You and Scotty and I know came on about the same time, and it's a lot of service, a lot of dedication, and I know you got rolled out of bed a lot of nights since then you've been assistant chief with all the extra duties that go along with that. But to your wife Margie and to your family, we send our thanks and wish you best. And I said, I wish I'd been here today and had a little luncheon for you, but I had to see my daughter off to Germany, so we're just very appreciative of your time. Thank you. Chief, any who would say good.
Thank you.
Any who would say good.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank my wife and my family for the 26-plus years of supportive support, especially the last two and a half years. Thanks, Augie. You can go as long as the Cardinals win. Okay, at this time, as I stated, there's no public hearing, but we will open public participation. If anyone would like to address the council this evening, please step up to the microphone, give your name and address, and try to keep your remarks for two to three minutes. You can go first, sir.
Thanks. I'm Ricky Ruman. Address is 4567 Norwood Road in Waterloo. I had previous vacation arrangements, so I couldn't make the zoning meeting. I wish I could have because maybe I wouldn't have been four against two. I want to put the car lot at 8330. Well, it's Highway 15, but it's actually on 13. It's on the back address part. But I just, I guess, showed up tonight hoping maybe you guys would give me a chance to do that. I guess without me being there, I couldn't really answer no questions.
The vote will come up later on in the meeting. If there would be a specific question at that time.
Yeah, that's why I can't.
I will allow it. Normally by that point, there's, you know, the questions are mainly after the zoning meeting.
I've got a lot in those time. I'm just, I'm running out of room, and I'd like to come here. I know I have to sell a lot of cars, so if I had to stand in front of the microphone for it, it's something that'd be kind of hard. All right, thanks.
It's good to know that you're here.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
My name is Kathleen Draper. I live at 500 South 19th Street. I'd like to quote Webster Dictionary as "under intimidated means make timid or frightened." I was addressed by the Bellevue Police Department on Sunday evening because I drove through the neighborhood watch area and admired the job that Mr. Rudowitz did on having it done on the alley between Madison and 20th Roosevelt Avenue. And we had, some neighbors back there had some complaints because the alley was rutted up and was tearing up their cars, and I had spoke to Tim about it and questioned him. And I went through that alley on a neighborhood watch and admired the good job that they did, asphalted it and stuff. And two hours later, I get two big police officers in bulletproof vests that were more intimidating to my grandchildren than me. I mean, I've been disabled for nine years. Anybody who knows me, I've just been off of a walker for the last three months. I get the police to tell me that this strapping 20-year-old man says that I'm intimidating him by driving through the alley. Okay, I think that's a little uncalled for, and I don't know what his problem is, but now according to the police department, I'm not allowed to go through the alley or go on Roosevelt. Now, I've lived on 19th Street for 56 years, and you're telling me that I can't go down a public street because someone is intimidated? This is crazy. Okay, I'm sorry, but this is crazy. And I don't know, and he told, the police told me, they said, "Well, if you continue to go down that way, then we're going to continue to come by here." If I'm so intimidated and someone may think that my cane is intimidating, intimidating to anybody, then they wouldn't let me in a council meeting. If I don't have the cane, I can't walk. When I went past his house, I wasn't walking. I was inside my car with the windows rolled up.
I haven't had a chance, I know you called the other day, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the chief or anybody about the whole situation, so we're not going to resolve it tonight. I think you had a chance, you have more than two minutes to give your concerns. And, you know, like I said, I can only ask when I see the chief tomorrow, so if, you know.
Well, the grandchildren were more intimidated, I can grant you.
You've been heard. Okay, thank you. You, right here, sir, you first. Yes, sir, right here. Please.
Hello, my name is Sean Willich. I live on 1009 Bellevue Drive. I would just like to make aware of an issue that our street has with flooding. Each time it rains, the whole street becomes inundated with water, and I just moved here recently from Carbondale, and the last couple times that it's rained, it's been really bad. And apparently from the story that I've gathered is there are two separate owners for each properties, and they're in dispute about the drainage system. So when this water accumulates, I mean, it gets to be about a foot deep. On my laptop, I have pictures of...
Have you called City Hall before?
I just, like I said, recently moved here.
This is your first attempt to notify us?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, Tim, have you been aware of his address?
No, I have not.
Okay, and Tim, can you write down the address? And maybe, maybe, maybe you can write this, maybe you step out with this gentleman a second and get his home number.
Yeah, I wasn't really sure what avenues to take, as I said.
Tim's our city engineer, and between him and our street department director, we'll talk about it tomorrow staff meeting, and we'll try to take a look at it. But when we get your number, where to contact you, we'll certainly see. Sometimes there's some simple solutions, sometimes they're very complex and cost a lot of money. But I'm not, that address does not stick in my mind as being one that comes to my office, you know, every time or twice.
Yeah, when I talked to the neighbors, they had all said, "Oh, yeah, we've called," which I kind of was, yeah, I thought they were kind of not.
I'm not saying they have, I'm just saying I have not, it doesn't stick in my mind. Oh, you guys, does that sound like the address you guys got?
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, there's the two aldermen over there, so.
Well, I was talking.
Talk to Tim, and then we'll work from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, gentleman back here first, and then we'll go over to our other gentleman.
Michael Hickberg, 701 Centerville. It's been stated that the IEDPA has mandated Bellevue separate the storm sewers from the sanitary sewers. $538 of TIF funds along 268,000 of state grant money has almost completed the $806,000 East Washington coplar. Question, has the master sewer project given you a date as to how soon the road wave on East Washington will be torn up to separate the storm sewer?
Sir, we are, I think Royce, where you at here? You can jump in anytime you want, but we are separating storm sewers in most projects as we go. Our, our director and our consultant, our engineering firm, are advising us. In this particular case, because we were here too. There was nothing in that project right there that was imminent that we could do that would make significant with other projects that are coming, right?
Right, in order to separate on East Washington, we would have to tie in every leg to the East Main.
Right. So, so we evaluated it. But, but when you look at the fact that most of the city has these, now, we are, every time we do a street project, if we can possibly separate where we will make an impact, we are doing it. Fair to say, guys? We've done it countlessly.
That's what I'm getting at.
But this particular one was evaluated and felt that we couldn't get the bang for our buck for this particular project.
Okay, thank you. Vicentino Park staging, got some photos here. After many emails back and forth, I think we have the following facts correct. 17th Street Project is still using the park as a staging area, but no additional dirt will be dumped in the park. The contractor will soon place a silt barrier around the existing mound of dirt. The Parks Department is no longer dumping grass clippings and wood chips in the park. Wood chips will not be used on the linden wood running trails. Grass clippings and wood chips have been removed and are hope to send to the composting company. Streets Department has ceased dumping the street sweeper refuge in the park. This refuge is heavily laden with plastic bottles, you know, broken glass, rubber tire bits, oils and hazardous materials. And this has been removed from the park and sent to a landfill? Are these statements correct?
Chuck?
They are correct.
Okay. The only time we had for very long at all, when we were changing some things around, when work was going on, the street department building and the new sanitation building was being built, we used the concrete pad out there at the, at the Vicentino for a short period of time before we could haul it to the dump. Is that correct?
Correct. There was never anything hazardous out there.
No, no. And it was never there for very long. It was a transfer point for a short period of time while we were putting in all the windows and all the insulation, because we had to get everything away from sight and do a lot of things moving around at Long Heights Road. And, and we were still, up until not that long ago, finishing the complete job with all the little ins and outs of finishing the sanitation building project.
The street sweeper stuff is not considered hazardous where it picks up all the roads and stuff?
Not at all.
Okay. On July 30, a Bellevue man, Hayden, requested a silt barrier replaced around the existing pile of dirt. To this day, there's no silt area installed. Last weekend, rain did a good job of creating, moving the dirt down the hill, creating a nice mudslide. There's photos here.
It is on the list, Mr. Hickberg. I know Mr. Hayden did at that time mention it. If somebody would have called back, but, you know, we, we are down to the lowest number of street department employees we've ever had, with, with more and more things to do each and every day. I'm not making excuses, and I'm not saying the silt barrier shouldn't have been put up yet. It will be put up. Obviously, a phone call, or an email, Mr. Hayden, could have reminded Chuck to possibly have...
I heard about this.
Well, it was talked, it was talked about in the meeting, but maybe you weren't even here that day. Sometimes things do slip through the cracks. There's a lot of work on everybody's plate, and when we don't follow up with communications that may bother you, then sometimes we can forget. Seems like I did hear it, but I didn't know that you guys didn't connect. We'll work on it. But like I said, these guys, these guys are out there, they were out there in preparation for the heavy rains this past weekend, cleaning catch basins and trying to get things done. We're trying to prepare downtown for all the festivals this fall, just like we do in the spring. We've been, you know, and they've been going great guns, and like I said...
I was saying, six weeks ago was talked about and never done, and now we had heavy rains this weekend, and it really created quite a mess out there.
But all I can say is I apologize for that, and we'll certainly get on.
Yeah. The other thing that was discussed was that the area would no longer be used as a staging area.
No, 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 that's, that's not true. We said, we explained, if I'm not mistaken, and Tim jumped in here, we're saving the city's money, right, Tim? By staging some of that dirt.
That dirt is up top. Within a week, should all be moved out of there and down to the bottom.
And by doing that, we didn't have to purchase extra dirt, right?
Right.
So we actually saved the taxpayers some money. So we never, we never said that we're, you know, we're trying to be frugal in our, in our decisions here.
Well, in an email from Debbie Bellevue, she said that the area was no longer going to be used as a staging area. And I bring that up because this last week, this pile of 200 feet away has shown up, new piles and stuff, looks like it's from the Kimball Plaza, which it probably is.
Mr. Hickberg, are you getting complaints on this yourself or Joe, are you getting complaints about this? I mean, because you don't live right there, do you?
No, I don't.
I, I mean...
I always wonder, it's like, why you're, I mean, this new pile appears to no silt around, silt area around it either, and it's just like, there are rules to be followed, and they're not being followed.
Well, we will, we will certainly address that with the staff tomorrow staff meeting. Your list of complaints, please, for the thing?
One more item, if you don't mind. I'll make a question. The dog park, we talked about putting up signs for the dog parks, saying it was a proposed dog park site.
Who signs up?
What, what actually showed up is this, future dog park site.
Well, it's a proposed future dog park site.
Well, then say, proposed dog park site. You're not asking the public's input on this, you're saying, this is where the dog park is going to go. That, you know, it's just when you do things like that, it just makes me wonder, it's just like, you know, why don't you want the public's input on it?
Jim, do you, do you, do you have an answer for that? You can change your time.
That's fine.
Public service announcement? The hazardous waste that we talked about, I think upstairs last time, is open, the one in Swansea is open to all Dillanway residents.
Right.
So that anybody who has house里的 waste could bring it up there on the 16.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone, yes, to the back of the room?
Stuart Leonard, 318 South 29th Street, Bellevue. When you mentioned festivals in the fall, I got a feeling we're going to be looking at that Meredith Home for another year because, you know, I want to have a huge construct, teardown in the middle of a festival. And as what's the name of the cat he was saying about the police? As I said last month, our last meeting, that there's a dope house, welfare fraud, prostitution, pimping, and a pedophile living right next to a grade school, Franklin School. And one of them females at Franklin's, next to Franklin School, who I used to do a little work at my house until I found out what kind of person she was, I, well, I bought her $70, and she didn't want to pay. All of a sudden, there's two star troopers down at my house, dragged me down to the police station and set up with the key to stealing her link card. I didn't steal her link card. She owed me $70.
Stuart, Stuart, I'm sorry. We have heard this story, I don't know how many times. So, you know, I would suggest it, you talk to the Bellevue police, if that doesn't work, you might want to go across the street and try to make an appointment with the state's attorney. I don't know what else to tell you, but we've heard this story about the link card and this young lady and this, this endeavor. I know I've heard it in this, in this chambers probably at least six to eight times, minimum. So there's nothing else we can do about that.
But that's the way the liberals operate. They'll repeat a news story 20 times of if it affects a conservative, and then they'll run it one time for a Democrat. Oh, we covered that, but a conservative, they'll run that story 20 times. But anyway, the police drugged me out of my house two times at home on a kind of this lying female. Twice, I was drugged out of a city home meeting on a kind of this lying female. And I took her to small claims court and got a $206 judgment on the $70 she owed me. So I just think the police are, seem to believe everything she says. Dragged a taxpay and law-abide citizen basically out of a city home meeting twice. Dragged a person out of their house twice, down to the police station. Thank you.
Anyone else to see? Hearing done, I will close public participation. We will now move in, we've already had a presentation to Augie Werner. Tim Snyder, would you like to come forward and bring up a little information about our character word of the month?
I was asked this evening to say a few words about this month's character word, which happens to be respect, which means, of course, to show regard for self, others, property, and persons of authority. We come here with a lot of mutual purposes. Since I'm talking about respect, I might start by saying, we are all human beings and manners. We live in the same town, we are impacted by the same issues, and we share much mutual purpose. We're here to solve the same problems. We're here to make Bellevue better. Mutual purpose, I would submit, is served most effectively when there's also mutual respect. Why? Because when you take away respect, it's a little bit like air, in the sense that if you take away, take it away, it's all we think about. When there is perceived disrespect, especially pervasive disrespect, the conversation is no longer about the issues at hand, about the original purpose, about our ability to solve problems, mutual purpose. It becomes about defending dignity. With respect, however, especially pervasive respect, that can be like a magical appointment to any kind of group. Disagreement, which is obviously an essential part of any group process, can become the sharing of perspectives. The people in the room, when they can take their focus off of personalities and dignities, can get about the business of mutual purpose. How do you do that when there's great differences in thinking? Well, perhaps by dwelling less on differences and dwelling more on mutual purpose. A very wise man once suggested that it begins with our own heart. It begins with our own habits of looking at each other as people of man. Yes, he gave the hint of how to do that, in form of a prayer. Please, Lord, help me forgive those who sin differently than I respect. Character of the month, thank you very much.
We now move to the regular portion of the meeting. We have the minutes of the regular city council meeting held August 20th, 2012, which you pleasure.
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve and file amendments of the meeting.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Consilla. Any additions or corrections to these events? Hearing done, all in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Claims payroll dispersments.
Your Honor, they have the claims payroll dispersments to be paid.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Heisler, and a hearing discussion there. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selfie.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports, only board of appeals advisory reports.
Page 2B, request an area book variance in order to build a 1,955 square foot duplex on a block that is only approximately 7,491 square feet in the area on North 12th Street in a A2 family residential district. The zoning would recommended by a majority vote, but it's here.
Your Honor, actually, when I was at the zoning meeting, and we did not have a site plan that included our, as per our ordinances, we just received that site plan on our desk tonight. I'd like to make a motion to table this, to review that a little bit further and make sure that there is actually a number of them on that particular lot.
Motion by Alderman Meyer to table, and I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Holt. Discussion.
I do have a discussion about this case specifically, but about some others. I regret I was not able to attend it because I was out of town. However, I noticed that we already had the ordinance written for this one, which I thought our policy was, when there is a mixed vote coming out of zoning, we do not prepare or contradict this.
I think if it was denied...
That is simply our policy, and that's an oversight of my power, I apologize.
Twice tonight?
No, I believe there were.
On this case, case 53, and also on case 55. So either we have standard policy or we don't.
Well, I think she just promised.
Yeah, case 55, we don't have an ordinance on, or this one must have been an oversight, I apologize.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, yes, sir.
Emily, is this not the Revada site plan you said you was going to submit?
It is, it was placed on the desk tonight.
That's the problem.
I want to look at it a little more, it's my part, and I can start about it.
Is this, is this not the design?
That is what was submitted this afternoon, and that's what I placed on the desk.
Then I have a, then there's a page just to see.
Could you, I know it was a flat number, could you give us a street number?
Yeah, it's about three houses, it's on the west side of North 12th Street, about three lots south of D.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's, we have it. Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to table this. All in favor of table, and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Patty Law, request a sign installation for an area special control at 201 East Main Street, and the zoning board would recommend a removal by command.
Move the recommendation of the zoning board to have a proper construct.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Consilla, do I hear a discussion? Is this a discussion?
Yes, sir. Emily, did she just not understand she had to help for a minute?
I think that's probably the case, there's a lot of signs downtown that, you know, everyone opens up.
Do we need to do something to let the work install?
We need to, we agree, we need to look at it.
I mean, our sign code needs to be looked at.
Because if you look at it in, 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 in great depth, every store opener that puts an open sign in their window, probably technically should get, so we...
The flash, yeah.
Well, yeah. And these neon signs that are there for open and close, so we probably do need to look at it. It's a small sign, and technically, you were right when you, you know, we had a concern, but it's, it's a small size, about the size of the...
I just want to be fair, but I'm afraid, because we do have new merchants, not everybody understands what the ordinance is.
And we have certainly, you know, we have been, been particularly about getting windows painted, awnings, and the bigger signs, we have made sure that they've all followed. The smaller signs, we have, we have not held everybody's feet to the fire, because I do think we probably need to, when we get a free moment, probably look at that and revise it.
I want to just educate people, and that's what I'm looking at, not this story.
We're educated tonight, so we got a motion, and we got a second, right? To approve this, anything else? All in favor of approving case number 54, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Jill and Daryl Richardson, request a used, a used variance in order to operate a used car dealership for 30, 40 cars at 8330 West State Route 15 in an A1 single-family residence in the district. And the recommendation by the zoning board was to deny it by majority vote.
Do we hear a motion?
Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to deny the petition for an unattended storage used car lot on an A1 single-family, a single-family area.
The motion by Alderman Musgrove, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Arling. Do we hear any discussion?
Could somebody explain the difference between the Richardson's and Mr. Ruman? Who owns this, who's going to run it?
You want to explain that, go ahead.
Yeah. The Richardson's are my cousins, and I'd be the one running it. Who owns this, who's gonna run it?
You want to explain that, go ahead.
Yeah. The Richardson's are my cousins, and I, I'd be the one running it, and it wouldn't be unattended. I have another spot within a, not even a mile from where this one is, and it's in the county, and I already have it ready for inspection, but I don't want to get it inspected if I can't get this one, because the one down the road, I mean, it'll only hold like 10 or 15 cars, and I mean, at the volume of cars I can buy, I'd, it, it would be pointless. So that's why I was hoping this one would get passed, and it won't be unattended. I mean, they, they live right behind where it's at, and there's a tavern right here, and there's a church right here, and there's a gas station, and it's right at a four-way stop, I mean, it, I would turn 40 cars a month out of there, no doubt, and, I mean, that's why I'm trying to get it passed.
How big is this lot, how many cars do we have?
Uh, 30 to 40, it's 100 by 100 is what we're gonna blacktop, and I mean, I've already talked to a guy about blacktop, and we've already paid money to clear the lot off, just so you guys can get an idea of what I want to do, and I didn't want to go and spend another $30,000 on blacktop if it's not gonna get passed.
Uh, Mr. Ruman, uh, how long have you been in business, selling automobiles?
Uh, I've been all my life, I mean, I just opened my own lot last year, but I've been partners with guys for about 14 to 15 years, I buy out all the, all, every new car store in Belleville, I buy all their trades.
Yeah, I, I thought maybe your family was involved in the car business for a long time.
Yes.
Your father.
Yeah, I was kind of born into it, I didn't really have a choice about it.
I support, I mean, this is small business, you know, bringing a little bit of revenue in the city.
I do.
See, this is the problem, this is where I was sent, I was scared of town, so.
Motion, Schneider.
Yes, um, can I ask how many employees, we're gonna have this, maybe a full-time part type, I mean, is it gonna bring any employees to?
Well, right now, I just, I would have one guy.
But you will have some.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
And will they do, they won't be able to do any mechanic work?
No, I'm not doing no mechanic work, I'm just, I'm just strictly selling the cars, yeah, but I do have shops that I use, and that's who I take my people to, and they'll get the same discounts I get.
You stand while I'll.
I'm Jill Richardson, I'm the property owner, um, I live at 8420 Highway 15. I own all the property along Highway 15, from the EJ Motel to my house, and also the lot right next door, to where we're wanting to put this, and we spoke into the Cat and Fiddle, we spoke into the church, nobody is objecting, I'm not objecting, because I'm the connected property owner, so, you know, we're just wanting to bring some business to our end of town, and I mean, besides residential.
Yes, sir.
The lot is in the city limits of Belleville, but your office is outside of the city limits of Belleville?
Yeah, uh, well, it's kind of weird where the lot's at, I mean, it's, everything else is county there, except for that lot, and I, I mean, yeah.
So technically, when you sell a car, are you selling a car inside the city limits of Belleville, or outside the city limits of Belleville?
Well, I can, I can get an address right there, and it would be wrote up in the city, and if I sold one in the other spot, then I guess it'd be right up in the county, I mean, they're a mile apart from each other, is, is the county still considered?
Yeah.
No.
You're in two different jurisdictions, and I see his point, but it is really, it is peculiar there, the Cat and Fiddle's in the county, uh, you're, this proposed lot is in the city limits.
Yes.
I, I think one of the biggest things that.
About the, the sales tax?
The sales tax, if it's, if he sells off this lot here, it goes to the city.
Yeah.
But how would we know?
Well, I would, just every car that came off of there, and almost every car will come off of that lot, because eventually I'll just move them to that one, I mean, I'll write it up with that address, with the city, and, you know, I, I'll have two separate tax forms, I guess, is what I'll have to order, one for that lot with that address, and one for the one that's down the road.
Here's a, a thought, folks, um, I, I think one of the concerns that I heard was that there was gonna be, it was more or less gonna be storage, right, Mr. Musgrove, we talked, and, 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 you know, I think you're answering some of that question. I, what I would propose, since you've enlightened us a little bit here tonight, and you admitted you weren't at the zoning board.
Yeah, I was.
Uh, I think there's a few more questions that need to be, I, I would maybe ask before we put this to a vote, possibly see it turned out as the zoning board did, that maybe we would table this for two weeks, and, and, and sit back down and explain, because I have a few concerns about, you know, it's one thing to sell cars there, but are we gonna be storage cars for how long, that are gonna be, maybe become derelict vehicles? I, I'm just saying, I think we need a few more parameters to be, to be spelled out before we would do that, because we, we gotta, as much as you're saying, and I'd kind of like to see the letter from the church, or this buddy, I know you're one of the budding property owners, so that does stand that you're here to speak to us. Those are concerns that always face us, is what do the immediate neighbors feel, what impacts them in a positive or negative way, and, and, you know, we're certainly not against sales tax, we're certainly not against selling cars in Belleville, but I think there's a few things that you didn't get a chance to explain, and maybe by tabling this two weeks, maybe you can do a little better job of, of convincing this group that, that this is still a worthwhile adventure.
Okay, see, I mean, if this spot goes good, he's got plenty of property back there to where a building could be built, and it would go over very nicely, it'd stay in the city, and right now, I buy, I have a permit from Secretary of State, because he owns the property that's in the county, and I put one car there, and I probably sell 25 to 30 on the month, this would not be a storage lot for derelict vehicles, if I'm not turning my money, I'm not staying in business, so, I mean, I can promise you, these cars won't sit there, you'll see different cars constantly.
I just want to clarify, when you're like, um, the zoning board, this, there's not gonna be anybody on site, you just said there would be somebody there to sell the cars, they won't be at the lot, right? There'll be a phone call to another location?
Yeah, but I mean, they're right down the road, I mean, with that phone.
There's nobody on site, is my question.
No, but I've already been selling some of my cars, now that I got word of mouth, I mean, people call me constantly, and it would, it would benefit everybody, I, if it didn't, you could just tell me, just close it down.
Oh, and, and?
And my question's been, is this about sales tax?
Okay.
I have a question about notification. Did we have our zoning sign posted on this property?
Yes.
And did we, even though the neighboring properties were not in Belleville, did we send down the letters?
Yes, I did.
And, and it's true that there were no objectors?
No.
And had you heard from any other property owners?
I've actually talked to them, I've knocked on some of their doors, the ones that I didn't already know, I grew up in the neighborhood, I mean, everybody around here knows, everybody around there knows me.
So your proposal is table?
Well, I just think there's a couple of things that I'd like to, I mean, we're, we're getting some of the questions answered here tonight, and I think the fact that he wasn't at the zoning board certainly was, you know, unfortunate for him, but I, I think two weeks might make a difference on kind of putting the, a few more questions answered, resolved, and maybe we can take a look at it.
It's, it's hard, because it's a vacant lot, I mean, I know it's hard to imagine it right now, but if it goes good, I mean, I could put a building there next year, no problem, if it goes over, but if I don't get a chance to even try it, I mean, you know.
I do have a question. Yes.
If, if we postpone this for two weeks, and consider it, with your office building being adjacent to the parking lot in the county, would you be willing to consider annexing that into the city?
Yes.
You're most of my, you're not, you're not right there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually right past McDonald's and Kmart on.
There's no way that that could be annexed?
We'd have to look at it, I don't, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't think it's easy.
Well, I'm sure they would give me, I could, Secretary of State, if I talk to them, I mean, I'm sure that Illinois would give me two different tax forms with the addresses that were.
That was my question, so we can look at it.
I'm sure I can look into that.
Mr. Musgrove, would you consider, uh, amending your motion to table it for two weeks?
Okay, I'll amend the motion, or I'll just change the motion to, uh, table this for two weeks.
Mr. Jordan, acceptable? So, at, at this point in time, we have a motion to, uh, table this, uh, recommendation, uh, for two weeks, that we can obtain a little bit more information, maybe you can come in, sit down with Emily and I, and talk a little bit, and, and then, uh, see if we can answer a few more of the questions, okay?
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, everybody's okay with that? All in favor of the motion to table for two weeks, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Any objection when reading the next read at the groups, as they all apply the same person, the zoning director, that was in that.
Okay.
Lieutenant Lubin requesting rezoning of the property at 122 Mascoo Avenue, from C2 Heavy Commercial District to A1 Single Family Residential District. Uh, next, requesting rezoning of the property at 120 Mascoo Avenue, from C2 Heavy Commercial District to A1 Single Family Residential District. All three of those are recommended, you may ask.
Motion by Alderman Syberg, second by Alderman Martinson, to approve case number 56, 57, and 58, and have the proper ordinances drawn.
Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask where exactly Mascoo Avenue, that, what business this, or what this was, that's going?
What was the question? Where, where exactly is this at, or?
I'm sorry?
She, she wanted to know where exactly it's at.
Um, the chiropractor's on the, uh, north end of, um, Mascoo Avenue, it's the second block of Mascoo Avenue from Bay Street, and there's, so it's chiropractor.
There's Charlie's, um.
Charlie's is on the south side, and, and it's on the east side of.
It's, it's between them.
So. So it's in between Charlie's and, it's the three properties between Charlie's and Mayor, actually, two properties, well, three properties between Charlie's and Main Street.
The what is it?
A diagonally, it's in from the, um, house, um, the historical house.
Yeah.
It's up, it's right before this.
Correct.
It's right before Charlie's.
It's, it's in between Charlie's and the motorcycle shop, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? We have a motion to approve the recommendations, uh, forwarded to us by the zoning board and the proper ordinances drawn for those three cases. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Oral reports, Alderman Anderson.
Yes, Your Honor, on behalf of the Massesort Committee, I would like to make a motion to through the long-term control plan construction pay request number 26, and pardon of John 2008, or for the total amount of $1,000, $210,948, and .32 in isolation.
Second, ma'am. We have motion by Alderman Anderson, second by Alderman Martinson, to approve that pay request, uh, to the, uh, project 11 ways of our treatment. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Inzella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Selsby.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Syberg.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Motion carries, uh, motion to approve a street ban permit request for advertising a barbershop concert to be held October 27, 2012, at the North Illinois Street Skate Interest in the City. Motion by Alderman Selsby, second by Alderman Meyer. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Solicitor's license request, Kyle R. Bostick, to sell products for Jarvis Exteriors, Zachary F. Winkler, Winkler, uh, Hamilton, to sell products for Jarvis Exteriors, and Joe, Joe Mo Kim, to sell products for American Development Home.
Can we remove one individual from this? And I have concerns about his background check.
Okay, which one would you like to remove?
Kyle Bostick.
Okay, so we have a request to strike him from the list tonight, um, and, and, and do we get a motion yet? We haven't got a motion yet. So you want to make a motion with approving the other two, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So there's a motion by Alderman Hart to approve the second two, Zachary and Joe Mo Kim, uh, to, and here's, and Alderman Kinsella seconds that with the striking Kyle Bostick, uh, regarding, and I have that, I don't have this in front of me, but regarding concerns with the background. We have a motion, a second, do we have any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, as spelled out by Alderman Hart and, uh, Kinsella, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. We're moving on. Motion to approve the use of City Hall, the lotty, for gingerbread cookie walk on Saturday, December 8th, 2012, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., this is about the third year we've done this now, for, uh, do I hear a motion? Motion by Alderman, uh, Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Syberg, any discussion?
This is where you just set the cables and floorkeeper drop off.
Right. And they're, but they're walking, the, the trackers do this, and they go into businesses, it's, it's, uh, it's a good program, they bring in quite a few, I mean, literally, maybe even over 100, 200 people coming through on that Saturday. It's a good thing for the businesses. We have a motion, a second, to approve this, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Also a motion to approve the gingerbread run on Saturday, December 1st, 2012, starting at 8:30 a.m., beginning and ending at St. Elizabeth's Hospital, same run as prior viewers. Do I hear a motion?
Some of them.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Syberg. Discussion. All in favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Uh, motion to, that the board of fire police commissioners be authorized to fill the vacant assistant chief's position effective September 8th, 2012. Motion by Alderman Selsby, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Syberg. Discussion.
Can I?
Yes.
Then will we go back through, moving everybody around, you know, moving?
There's gonna be some movement, yes, once this, we just wanted to make sure that, we want to make sure that this body didn't have any problem with, it's in the budget, but keeping everything moving forward with this position, so that now the position, the, 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 uh, police commissioners now can, because this is, this position is, at this point in time, assistant chief's position, as currently, as it currently is outlined, is a, a position through the Police and Fire Commission Act, and, and so, they just want to get the ball rolling, and they can move on this, and, and start to, start to offer it, and, and see what's, what's gonna happen.
So, like, we would probably be hiring another car?
Well, absolutely, we're gonna have to, to keep our safer grand requirements, uh, Assistant Chief Warner does not officially retire until Friday, so we can't take any action until after Friday, officially, you know, you can't hire somebody before that, before there's a vacancy created. If he were to, at the last minute, change his mind, we would be going over the budget by actually having an extra person. So we're just kind of getting ourselves set up, right, Chief?
Right.
So that we can move forward as expeditiously as possible, uh, and that's what we're trying to do here. So we have a motion, and we have a second, yes?
In essence, we're basically just stating, we're gonna move forward, keeping the same amount of farming.
Filling, filling the position. And keeping the same amount of farming that we have, which is really what we already committed to with safer grand a couple of years ago. We have a motion, a second, to fill this, give them authority to fill this position. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Inzella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Uh, this time, there's no petitions, there's no resolutions. Ordinance says, I ask for a motion to read by title only. Ordinance is number 7623, 7624, 7625, 7626, 7627, 7628, 7629, and 7630, and 7631. Motion by Alderman Sillsby to read those ordinances by title only, second by Alderman Heisler. Discussion.
What about these, 7626?
That was taken.
Correct.
We will table that one, I'm sorry, you're correct. So this would be 7626 is tabled. I made a mistake. Um, everybody, we got a motion to read by title only from Alderman Sillsby. We have a second by Alderman Heisler, and, uh, no other, no other questions besides, other than the fact of limiting 7626.
We also, um-
What's the other?
It's not on the list.
It doesn't have the notice.
Didn't have the notice, that's right, didn't write our papers. Okay, so, we, all in favor of the motion to read by title only, those ordinances have just stated, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, the motion carries.
Will these read one by one, or as a group, or a partial?
As a group.
As a group, I hear no objection, okay, let's proceed.
Ordinance number 7623, and ordinance in chapter 52 of traffic, the revised ordinances of the city of Belvoir Illinois, as amended by many portions of sections thereof. Ordinance number 7624. An ordinance in chapter 52 of traffic, the revised ordinance of the city of Belvoir, Illinois, as amended by many portions of sections thereof. Ordinance number 7625. An ordinance vacating the drainage utility easement on lot 228 of Brookbridge State 10th Edition. Ordinance number 7627.
No. No, 26 is tabled.
Thank you.
And 26, 26 is tabled.
Thank you.
So, I mean, 7627. I always disagree, I understand. A zoning ordinance regarding case 54, August 12, Paddy Law. Ordinance number 7628. A zoning ordinance regarding, well, all of these, Kurt Lubin. Ordinance number 7629, and 7630. The Kurt Lubin ordinance, uh, for the various places on Mascood Avenue. And, uh, ordinance number 7631. An ordinance early to the Bryant Flat, that's 7629.
Motion to approve ordinance 7623, 7624, 7625, 7627, 7628, 7629, 7630, and 7631.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second, aye.
Second by Alderman Heisler, to approve those ordinances as just stated and read. Discussion, yes?
I got a question from the citizen, and I just want to make sure that I gave the correct answer, the way I understand. In relation to ordinance 7625, the city is just vacating part of an easement, which is a right of access. So the people that own that lot, basically, they still own the lot. We're just yielding part of an easement that they technically could use because of the easement that we don't need. And that is a question that I got.
Correct. It says drainage and utility easement, so basically, the utility companies have given up their access to that particular portion of the easement. Um, the underlying property owner is still owns the land.
Correct. The question was why are we giving this land up, and I told them we're not giving them any land up, we don't own the land, and we're actually allowing the person that owns the land to use the land in a more approved way. Thanks.
Exactly. We have a motion, and we have a second for all these ordinances. Is there any further questions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hay.
Aye.
Cyber.
Aye.
Martinson.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Arlen.
Aye. Motion carries. We have miscellaneous and new business. Yes, ma'am.
Can we go back to the discussion about the street department and their lists of priorities, and things getting cleaned, and things not getting cleaned? How, how often is that updated? Who was in charge of that?
Director of the street department is in charge.
Okay. How, then how did we miss, you know, we're not going to dump here, we're not, how did that happen?
Which, which-
Mr. Hager was speaking during public participation, and brought up a couple of issues.
First of all, that was in a public meeting, and I don't think, if I'm not mistaken, I don't know that Mr. Schaefer was here that particular night. And I guess, for whatever reason, um, normally, we're pretty good about whatever happens here, we take the staff meetings next day.
Okay.
Because I purposely have staff meeting always, the total staff, always the night, the morning after a city council meeting. That seems to be the most efficient way to not let things drop through the cracks. And all in all, over the last eight years, two, eight years that I've been there, um, we've been pretty good about that. We, we must have missed this one, and like I said, tomorrow's staff meeting, I guarantee you, Tim and I and Chuck will have a talk about it, as I still explain.
Okay. Uh, you know, because if, if it's requested this silver barrier on the 30th of July, and here we are already in September.
Well, I would just say, if somebody went back out there and saw it wasn't up, and it wasn't a concern to somebody, as many emails, and may, well, more emails and phone calls, because very few people pick up the phone and talk to anybody anymore. It's all about emails. It, it, as many as I get, and the staff gets, I don't recall getting an email since that, since we talked about it.
So you didn't have to, and all the work requested it?
I understand, but, but our human, and, you know, we, we have a lot of work on these people's plates, and they do a great job, and I'm just saying, it was a mistake. I apologize. Chuck and I and Tim will talk about it tomorrow. I don't know how much more I can beat this up.
Well, I'm just asking you how the system works, how-
Well, the system, the system normally is very good about business that's transpired here between Mrs. Fields' notes and between the staff meeting here, and that's why I asked the staff to be present at every council meeting, so that they can pick up on, apparently this time, but I do know that was probably a night that Chuck was actually, he wasn't here.
Okay.
And it was just dropped, okay?
On a related note, I understood when we started talking about moving the dog park, and I think it was Alderman Heisler that asked when we put the signs up. I, in my mind at least, it was clear we were putting up the zoning signs, just like we do on other properties. I don't understand how it got to be a printed sign, this is where it's going.
No, but Jim, what, didn't we go back, what was the vote a meeting ago? To change the consideration of the dog park to rotor, right?
Yes.
That was the motion that we passed here in this council, right?
But it was with the understanding that we post on the property that that was being considered. And apparently, that didn't happen, so nobody had a chance to object.
But, but I mean, it's, you know what, we've not constructed anything new there yet. I guess if, you know, if, if, um, I, I have not gotten one call from anyone, do you, Jim, about any objections thus far? And the signs, maybe, maybe the sign doesn't have the word "consider" in front of future.
I want to be authorized printing the sign.
Well, I think the request was here on this move, meaning that we said-
No, the request here was to put the zoning signs on, just for, you know, as a standard thing.
But you don't have to put zoning, do you?
I need to check the non-产权 property, but I believe it's owned-
It's a part.
A to, to family, which permitted use of the park in that district, so whatever-
I don't think zoning was ever the question, Alderman, hold. I, I think that we agreed, I think we agreed to post that the consideration was going up for this to be a future site, to make sure that no one could come back and say, we're facing neighbors, that we didn't know what was going on. And, and it's not a done deal yet, I guess it's fair to say. We don't have the money yet. We haven't taken a vote on taking any action, other than that vote we took to consider moving into this location. So I mean, it's, and I, and I will double check tomorrow, but like, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I don't think there's a zoning change that we have to do. I think it's about, once we get the funding and we can afford to do it, the vote will come to this council before we take action to, to build anything in that part, including fence up, to spend the money that, that, you know, that we have either already donated, or what they continue to raise to grants, et cetera.
Okay, and I'm, I'm not saying it was a zoning issue. I'm saying it was my understanding that was the type of sign we were putting up to alert the public they had the opportunity to speak about it. And I don't think the sign that was put up gives that idea.
Well, this, okay, obviously, the sign that put up doesn't quite meet your approval. But I will say this, the signs went up for what, Jim, a week or so?
I'm not sure.
But, but more than just a day or two. But my point is, I have not heard from anybody that it's been distasteful, or concerning, or alarming to anyone. Nobody, to my knowledge, nobody's called my office or your office saying they had heartburn over this. And that was the whole purpose of getting some kind of sign up, to get feedback. Now, the sign may not be perfectly written, but the sign is doing its job in that I saw it up there today, when I drove Meyer yesterday over the weekend, when I was out looking at things. I saw the sign there, and I thought, well, that's good. We put it up to alert the neighbors that there is a dialogue, or there is a plan being considered, uh, to put the dog park here. But, you know, there's nobody that's been jumping up and down, saying that's a bad thought, bad, you know, and we're, we're not ready to act yet, so, I mean, whether we spend any money to revamp the signs or not, I think the signs, the fact that they're up, there's a sign up, and the fact that we're, we did go around, even knocked on doors and gave flyers, and some neighbors did.
Some folks talked to someone there.
Yeah, so I mean, I think we're trying to make sure everybody's inclusive. Yes, ma'am?
Two, two points. One, on the, on the first part, you asked during public portion why I didn't follow up. I wasn't aware until just recently that I needed to follow up.
I'm just saying, if, it was a mistake.
I, 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 I understand.
Thirty days passed, and we missed something.
I, I'm not accusing anybody.
All I'm saying is, a phone call or an email probably would have got it done today or last week. I mean, we dropped the ball on that one.
I, I, right. You, you, you just made a comment that I didn't follow up. I wasn't aware that there was something for you to follow up. I just wanted to point that out. On, on the dog park, it was, I, because I'm the one that amended the motion. The, the motion was to put a sign up that said "proposed," that's what we were, but it, it's a question of semantics, but I, I do understand where, if you're saying "future site," that somebody could look at that and say, well, that means it's already done.
Well, or "future" could be proposed, and you have this interpretation, Jim?
And my understanding has got to be as exactly as Mr. David just stated it. I think there was just simply an oversight of not having to go and propose it.
And, you know, I don't know, a lot of this has cost us a whole lot of money, change of work.
Definitely. Take that away.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not upset about that. Probably the smallest thing we could do this week, you know? Yes, sir?
Mayor, I'd still like to raise my concerns about the mile machine 601 and 603, North Illinois. You know, the one house, 603, was built in 1850s, and, um, clearly, you drive on North Illinois, and there's no, you won't see any historical house like that, and this is one of the only houses that's still on North Illinois. The way, the way I think it could be styled is that the city has some funds to the tip to try to move the buildings back, about 15, 20, physically. And I think we'd be able to preserve a little, a couple of pieces of history, including 601. That's a, you know, significant building there on North Illinois, and I think it shows character to our town when you drive in from Swansea, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. That means that we went through about a two and a half, three-year deal with the state historic preservation. This is after all their review and study and inquiry. This was their recommendation, that they agreed that those buildings could and, and should be proceeding into, to allow projects to still go, and that they had no heartburn over those two buildings. Believe me, we went through a long ordeal with historic preservation at the state level. So, um, like I said, I, I think that, at this point in time, I think we, we've delivered over this, delivered over this long and hard, for literally years, and I think we finally got an action plan that we don't lose this money. Uh, we got plasma extensions from the state, the federal government on this money, and, and we got a chance to improve Illinois Street. The sidewalks are crumbling up and down there. Intersection at F Street definitely needs some widening and some work for safety reasons, and I think we got a chance to move forward, and the state of Illinois Historic Preservation has, has taken this up one side and down the other, and I, I think with what we have is what we have. And I think that, you know, we, we have to have this, if not programmed. The, the project as we've amended it, and it's already cost us a lot of money to amend it, um, it is modified from its original intent, but, but it's still doable, it still serves a purpose, it still improves safety, and I, I think it's virtually impossible to accomplish that if we, and to move those buildings, you're talking about some large chunks of dollars. This project is already, right now, with the, with the, with the delays, with the increase of redraft, redrawing it, um, we're already going to be, as we stated, going to be probably, you know, near, at, or over budget to get it finished, but it's still a worthwhile project, we believe. Anybody else to see? Okay, so, let me get that, Mrs. Fields. Motor Fuel. We have a Motor Fuel claim to amount of $22,006.417. What's your pleasure?
Mine is to be paid, aye.
Alderman Cyber moves to pay the claim, second by Alderman Heisler. We have a discussion about Motor Fuel. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Rudowitz.
Aye.
Carpenter.
Aye.